Okay, we are all here. Board members are all present. So it is 12:09 PM on Thursday, July 15th, 2021. This is a special school board meeting of the Public School Board. Thank you. Welcome, Ryan.
Sorry for.
We are meeting via Zoom. Present via Zoom, we have myself, Sonya Mill. We have Sheila Nagel, Ryan Rosenbauer, Monica Heimbach, and Robert Thorpe. April Herring is joining us by Zoom. Carrie Haugen is present by Zoom. And in the conference room, we have Mr. Getz and Mr. Beta. I think we will dispense today with the pledge of allegiance. And the the agenda includes two items. The appointment of our business manager and a discussion about the activities director position. Mr. Getz, would you bring us up to date on the need for the appointment of a business manager, please?
Yeah, just one of the things that, and I forgot to ask April about it earlier, but we should be appointing her on a yearly basis, basically because she's not under a contract. She would be an at-will employee and it'd be good to have the board approve her as the the board's business manager.
All right, I will entertain a motion to appoint April Herring as our business manager for the 2021-22 school year.
I will make that motion.
Nagel makes the motion to appoint April Herring. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Monica Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing no questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye. Or give us a thumbs up. I heard Robert, Monica, Sheila, Ryan said aye. All those opposed say no. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the discussion about our activities director position. Mr. Getz has sent us out some information. Hopefully you all had time to review it. Do you want to give us some highlights or answer any questions, Mr. Getz, that have come to you that hasn't been addressed in the information you provided?
I do, I just kind of off-touch base, just make sure that everybody did get that email with the, it was two pages long. If there was any questions on that. I think there was not so much questions on what other superintents were talking about, but maybe sort more so about clarifying the, when I get down to my original intent was to move into unfilled FTEs. Move the unfilled FTE, or not really unfilled, but the the position, the FTE that became an extra FTE would now move into the AD FTE. So then that's how I'm talking about that 1.5 FTE is combining that FTE that we are no longer needing with the half of FTE for the current AD, and that's where those two numbers come from. So I I just kind of wanted to explain that a little bit because I know it can be kind of confusing in that aspect. Some of the other questions that kind of came forward to me was was advertising. Do we want to advertise the position? I think we may be a little bit early on that question. Is is it full-time? Part-time would be one that I would have, if we're going to continue with part-time or not. And then if we do go full-time, do we want to advertise it with a high level and a low level? Or just put it as a depending on experience? I think those are some good questions that the board can discuss. I personally would say leave it with depending on experience. So that they know that there's some flexibility in there. Anybody that's applying should know that. How many hours do I anticipate that the the AD would substitute teach? I think it really depends. Sometimes it would be just to cover those teacher, those teachers that have to leave early because they're going to a coaching to be able to coach. I also foresee that there's going to be some times throughout the year where our principals are going to be looking for a sub that they would be coming in and helping us cover along with our, there's times when, I've had the sub this last year. And as a superintendent, you don't like to see that, but at the same time, I'd much rather have the classrooms covered rather than me sitting in the office doing my office work. I can always go back and do that later. So that's, the principals go the same way. At the same time, this AD position would be another, give us another person to go to for that type of situation. Because that is part of the, in the job description, that would be unpaid. So they would be filling that just as if like I went into that classroom. I would not be getting subpay to be able to do that work as well. Does that make sense? Okay. Another question was how much AD work was being done by the admin assistant? I honestly, to be honest with you, I can't answer that question. And I'm not gonna lie, these questions came in while we were sitting in interviews. I really didn't have a chance to do any research on that. But I did talk with Brandon just a little bit, and I think I agree with what he's saying is a lot of, like your social media stuff, he should have access to it, but sometimes there's going to be times where the admin assistant is going to post that because they're working with that at all times. Anyways, a photographer, same way as you're taking pictures throughout the school year, I would assume that the photographer would be lined up with the admin assistant. That technically, the scheduling, there should be no work by the admin assistant with that. As far as lining up the the job duties, that should all be done by the AD themselves, not the admin assistant. I think we're hiring this position to be able to fill that position to its full potential instead of just doing part-time work there. It's something we want to fulfill that to the full potential. I don't know if that helps explain that a little bit more. If there's more questions than that, please ask. The other question just kind of came up of with the the number of months. It should it be a 10-month, a 12-month, 11-month? Where should that fall? And I think it was kind of a personal opinion on that. I think it should be a 12-month position simply because there's stuff that they can be doing during the summer. And one of the things that I kind of think about, what would you have as a big job during the summer would probably be going out and trying to receive those additional funds to help cover some of the expense of all of our athletics and activities. So that way it's being covered as much as we can outside by fundraising or by sponsorships and and doing that extra work. So I think that's a big piece of that. Anything to add on that?
Yeah, could you explain the fundraising component of that and what that looks like for this position? I'm a little unclear on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'd probably be more of a sponsorship type aspect because of the simple fact that I don't want to take away from the fundraisers that are already being done, especially from our team makers or any of those extras that are helping us already. But one concept of it was, my thoughts of it is obviously, we we tax our local patrons a lot already for different fundraisers. Obviously, we want to give them the opportunity to be able to be a part of that, but a good example of that would maybe be going up to Fargo or Valley City, Jamestown, Aberdeen, some of these bigger communities that our small community still supports. And going out and trying to get some of these other businesses outside of our community to start putting some of those funds towards our programs as well, in the same aspect of we are supporting that. It could be a game sponsor, sponsorship, so you have a sponsorship. It could be that they are able to advertise in our our programs. So our program may grow by a piece of paper or two, but at the same time, what it's going to cost an extra paper, we would hopefully bring way more in in the fundraising. That was one. Those are just some simple thoughts that I've thought about that would be tough to start with. At least get their feet wet, but the next one would be, if we start looking at, I know at one point there was talk of the football field getting moved down to where the track is and having that become more of the school complex down that direction. So this person would be working with that and really going out and seeking for those additional funds to help fund that program. I shouldn't say program, but that facility, to improve that facility. Does that help a little bit with that, Ryan? Can I get where you're? A good enough explanation, or you want me to keep going?
No, I I understand what you're what you're saying. I I think the idea seems sound. I I I guess it's unfamiliar territory. I'm I'm just not sure how that would pan out, what that would look like. I guess I've seen that at other other, I guess, other venues, but not something that I've ever seen here. Just not, again, just kind of, I guess I'm more of a details person, so to see how exactly it would be drawn out, how exactly it would work is just the questions that I have in in my head right now. So, but that does help, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions with that?
It's just, uh, the the thought and the concept is good. It's the follow-through and how to make sure that happens if we did go forward. And say you do hire somebody and they just turn out to be not not the good fundraiser that we're hoping. How do we keep that up thinking that this was going to help finance the position? And now all of a sudden, those funds aren't coming in and we're left with another full-time administrative staff that we didn't have before. Yeah, it's contributing to the overall experience of the kids, but it's not contributing directly to the education as far as the learning side of it with another full-time employee on staff is my biggest fears.
Yep, and I think that maybe a good way to help explain that a little bit, if you noticed yesterday, I also sent out a second job description. And when I was looking through that, because I, that was a good question that came up is that there was concern of how do we monitor that fundraising? And I was reading through the job description again, and it just, it really wasn't, it was there, but it wasn't very clear-cut. So I added that, if you noticed on that last one I sent out for job description, I highlighted in yellow. It would become part of their essential job. That that would be a way to help ensure that they're out doing those fundraising. But at the same time, there's never a guarantee when you talk about fundraising. I think there's a lot of dollars out there that can be made. I just thinking back to a lot of these different facilities that are are built, they're built on a lot of fundraising. So I think it's a matter of, we got to find the right person, and that is a part of their job. So if they're not doing that part of the job, that would be something that they would be put onto an improvement plan. And then continue to strive and strive to get that better. If it's not getting better, then maybe that's a time where we have to part, split ways and move forward. Did that help a little bit, Robert?
It it does. It just, the, that's always the unknown, unfortunately. And how long does it take to get there if we end up with the wrong person in the position, if there is a position?
Yep. And and the other thing is I got to be careful that we're not stepping on those other fundraisers that are already being done. We do not want to do that. Just, the other day, I went down to the, another idea that just kind of popped in my head was, I went down to the the baseball game and and I was watching the Legion playing. I was talking with one of the patrons and they said that they used to do the commentary from up above the the stands. And I said, well, that's not being used at all anymore, is it? They said, no, not anymore. I said, well, how, and and they said, but that was one of the best views of that whole field. And I said, well, what if you were to sell that as, you know what, we put a pizza up there, some pop or water, and then that's something that you buy that box seat. And they were like, wow, that's a pretty good idea. Something as simple as that could also raise some money. I don't know if it's something that, during the basketball games, I don't know exactly where that's sitting yet, but is there a way to where you can do something with the basketball games there too? I I don't know. If they're playing in the north gym, there's that possibility of saying, well, if you want to have access to up in the wrestling room, now you can be able to watch from the wrestling room. But you're going to be able to, you have to pay for this this section of it. It's trying to just be creative. I I don't, I know it's always hard to be creative sometimes, but that sometimes is the best policy when it comes to fundraising or or trying to look for those additional funds. Doesn't always work, but at the same time, it's always worth trying something new. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. It just the
Uncertainty.
Yes, for sure. And then dealing with the uncertainty while it's happening, while we're going for, you know, that's, that's the biggest thing. And, you know, it's just, it's another staff member on staff that's not on the education side that had always been being fulfilled by either the the part-time position or in the past, you know, an administrator filling that position too.
Yep, I and I, I totally can see where you're coming from on that. So I I don't know how to overcome that other than to tell you that I definitely am going to monitor it. It'd have to be something that we would really try to push hard on the fundraising. And and like I said, I don't want to, I know how a small town also operates. I don't want to tax the businesses locally to where all of a sudden everybody's so sick and tired of us at the school that they're no longer going to work with us either. We don't want to burn those bridges as well. So that's, that's why I say I would like to expand that into the bigger communities and just really see what we can provide there.
One thought that was brought to me yesterday was all the clubs. You know, get a set amount of donation back to the school from, you know, like the wrestling club and the football clubs to be used towards part of this salary as well.
Definitely.
That was a dollar a year or or something.
I had heard that as well, and I I I heard it going more towards trying to get like an athletic trainer back into the school. So that's kind of why I was staying away from that one because I, I am, there is some other things that are in the back of my mind. I don't want to take all the way away to all the funds from somewhere else that we could be pining towards that. So I agree, that is one that has been brought to me. I was just a little bit more cautious with that because I think those type of groups would do better at supporting the athletic trainer versus an actual old FTE that is supplied by the school district. Does that make sense?
I think just coming in and seeing this, it's proven that this position is not going to be fulfilled through a part-time. It's just proven to be too much is what I've heard. And I just feel like with the amount of money that the school has put into the new track, I mean, in the last 15 years, putting up a second gymnasium and stuff. I feel like we have an obligation to ensure that that continues on and is run correctly.
And not only run correctly, but there's somebody that is closely monitoring to make sure that those facilities are taken care of. You know, and not just, you know, don't get it wrong, I'm going to also monitor and and so does our admin. But when you have somebody that is, that's their job is to make sure that these facilities are 100% taken care of. My main facility is the school. That's my main facility that I should be looking at. Along with Dave is working with that as well, but when you have somebody that that's their job is if they don't have that track, they don't have a job. So they're going to put that extra caution into that and extra care. And I don't know, Brandon can explain that a little bit more, being a previous AD, when you take those extra, the extra love towards that position of your job. Does that make sense?
Unfortunately, on the, also along with that is that now you're going to have another high-level administrator, you know, trying to pull even more money into the sports program and the activities program away from the education side, because that's just, if you got a good person in that job, that's what they're going to be trying to do is grow their program too.
But I feel like that's where Mr. Gets is coming from with the fundraising. Is really pushing that so that that's where the those funds are coming from.
Correct.
So a couple, a couple of comments I would have, that how would we measure the effectiveness of this, the person doing this job? And one way Mr. Getz brings forward in his narrative that the the general fund transferred $275,000 to the activities fund in the last fiscal year. And that has increased over the years. I would say, well, a couple of issues with the most recent school year is because of the additional equipment needed for a new track. Some, we hadn't had track the year before. We needed hurdles and pads and things like that. But, you know, it, and we started charging for track meets, which we had never done before. But that that was where we had, we've had a hole in the past too in revenues is that even though the one year we approved the the admissions charges for junior high events, I think very few times were, was there ever someone there to collect for junior high events? And I, it, there just were no volunteers to do so. I think this person needs to do that as well as plan and make sure that special activities are taking place at half-times. I mean, anytime you have the Prairie Twisters, who of course, last year weren't, weren't active in the community, but you have them performing at halftime, your gate is going to be bigger because all those grandmas and grandpas want to come too. Likewise, it used to be that the basketball boosters had, you know, second and third or fourth graders playing at half-times. And, you know, anytime you can have a special event that draws more people and excitement to our programs are going to bring more revenue at the gate. And I I see lots of opportunities for that kind of thing. Oh, another issue I jotted down is, you know, you know, a couple of years ago, we had the the booster clubs along with the district installed the the NFHS streaming system in both of our gyms. At that time, we talked about whether there were opportunities with that system to do advertising. We don't charge a subscription for that. We haven't. Now that it's not COVID anymore, maybe we need to consider charging a subscription. I think that many people would be willing to pay it.
Maybe another thing to help you a little bit with that, Robert, too, with the concern of we're taking away from an educational side of things. Well, if we were to make our AD part of an administrative position, that, and this is across the board for that type of superintendents, you can do that, but in the end, AD overtakes over everything that's academic. So now we really lost the leadership role in that aspect. So then we go back to, okay, well, let's talk about how to be a teacher. If something comes up as an AD during the school day and that teacher is in the classroom, that teacher's no longer teaching anything in the classroom because everything that they're having to concentrate on is this athletic training, athletic director, activities director, sorry, activities director stuff all day long. And it it has become, and maybe Brandon can talk to this more, but I know when I helped with this role at previous school, it consumed my full day. When there was something that was canceled, I had to get ahold of parents, I had to quit ahold of refs, I had to get ahold of all the workers. And because my AD was sick that day, and just for that one day, that's where, if I was a teacher, you've now lost classroom work and you've lost that extra that could have been there for our kids. So is it really helping our academic side as well? Yes, it it really would be because you would not be taken away from those times during the day. The other piece to it that you put it into a teacher's day and you say, okay, yeah, they have this time. Well, that time works great for our side, but what about the other side of the other activities directors that they're calling to try and line these things up with, who has their prep at a different time? We're not at the point where everybody is a full-time AD yet, so I think that's going to come more and more. As you you've seen, some of the superintendents pass their word along. You're going to see that probably happening more and more simply because, just like I just said, it doesn't work. You're getting these phone calls during class time, it's taking away class time. It it just doesn't, it takes away a lot of time there as well. Does that make sense where I'm going with that?
Yeah, for sure. On the on the teacher side, and I fully undersee that. It's the the trouble I'm just having is it's the admin side that we've added the leadership coach. I mean, that should be supplementing the admin. We've, we're adding a resource officer. That should be supplementing the admin. We're adding paras to try to help the admin keep up on top of everything too. And now we have to add a athletic director too. So I mean, it's just the staffing each year, we just keep adding more. That's not in the teaching. Is what my biggest concerns are, because just because you have to pay for everything, unfortunately.
The teachers need that support staff more than anything also.
Correct.
Mr. Getz, let me ask you this. If we add this position as a full-time position right now, how difficult is it for us to eliminate or reduce it in the future if we think it is not working as we had hoped?
It would be something that if it was not working, I would bring it to the board and and say we would need to reduce an FTE. And at that point, the board would make a vote on reducing it. And then it would come back to myself and administration to determine where that FTE should be reduced. So it'd basically be like a rich position. Because it is an FTE, we would have to go through that process a little bit. Make sure we're not covered.
And and because the board only holds you accountable as our superintendent, can you explain to us how you would hold this, the person in this position accountable for being successful in this role?
I guess it's same way with, it's like I were a teacher or administration, you're gonna, you're basically being involved with what's going on and overseeing it. Not constantly being on top of them, like not doing their job, but being able to see what's happening, listening to the public and and what the public is saying to me about, hey, this didn't get done. Or if I'm starting to see a lot of complaints come to me, there's going to be obviously a reason that we got to figure out what's going on there. There's a lot of different ways, but those are some of the probably basic ways that would be easy to explain it. Also, through the job description and making sure that that's done, there's the evaluation that is completed. And then also, if you noticed in there, the AD would have to do a yearly report to me to basically kind of show me that you did do all these things and and where's the proof?
Are there any other questions by the board, from the board?
I'm just wondering what the timeline that we're on right now, is it reasonable to assume that we're going to have a qualified candidate before school starts?
It's hard to say. I I do know that there's some people out there that are are asking me questions from other districts that are looking at possibly jumping ship. So I know that there's that possibility. I'm guessing that there's probably going to be some interest in house. So I would, I would, and I also know that there's some local people that are not in house that are expressing interest, only if it was full-time, not part-time. Because everybody knows it's it's a full-time job. So I do think that there's some interest out there. I just, I'm concerned the longer we wait, the more work that we're missing right now. And there's some things that are trying to be cleared up and it's, there's confusion of who do I go to, what do I do? And I think the sooner we can get this in place, the better. But I do think that we're going to have to hold some interviews.
Any other board members have a question or comment? If not, Mr. Getz, what, what would you consider to be the appropriate content of a motion for this matter? Are you, obviously, we would need to approve or disapprove the the establishment of a full-time and and the 10th, 10, 11, 12 month. Are you seeking a salary range from us? Or what are your thoughts about the specificity of such a motion?
I guess I would like to have it spelled a little bit, simply because that way it's it's out there. I don't have to be questioning you guys again. So the the timeframe that you would expect, the number of months, like I explained there, a salary would be great if you could do a range, but I understand if you can do a starting point. It would be nice to have a range, but at the same time, we could come back and negotiate with you guys. You want to do it that direction? I would, I would, I don't know if we truly need to have it as a full-time equivalency because really we're shifting one and a half into one. So we would actually be reducing the half, but not technically with the financial side of things. But it would be nice to have it in there, just so that way it's, it's been stated, if that makes sense.
Would you view, okay, if if someone joins us from another district in a position like this and they are not going to be a teacher for us, but maybe some, doing some subbing, are, is there salary? are, is their salary subject to T F F R?
Um, I can answer that. If they have a teaching license, then they will, they will qualify for T F F R. So just like Brennan, because he had a teaching license, we paid into his T F F R.
What if they have only a substitute teaching license?
Then it would be PERS.
Okay, thank you.
And what's the last part?
What percent of PERS do we pay April?
So North Dakota PERS is the public retirement system that the rest of the staff who don't have a teaching license are in, and that's 8.26% of the salary.
And that brings up another good point, Sonya, is that it'd be nice to have the benefits that you are wanting to include with that position. Because you, vacation, if that's something that's there, I, it would be, is it 12 month? I don't know, April maybe can fill more in on that too. Is, is there a set guideline that's been used in the past or?
12-month employees, um, get 10 days of sick leave, 10 days of vacation and three personal days a year. And then they're offered the 100% single health insurance or, um, $2 per estimated annual hours in lieu of health insurance if they do not take it. And then the retirement and the other benefits that they can elect voluntarily themselves.
Okay.
My thoughts are, we should discuss this at our retreat. I do not feel we should be making a motion and doing something of this magnitude on this short of notice. That's my opinion, because I did not see this until Tuesday at our meeting, because I was looking at the previous version of our board meeting minutes. So I did not see this until Tuesday morning. So that's my o- opinion. Um, I think this is a pretty large-scale thing to be pushing through quickly to get going. So I think we should discuss this much further.
Thank you. Any other board member?
I, I'm of the same opinion as Ryan. Um, it just, we're adding, we added a lot of staff this year, uh, in the past too. I just see, wanna see going forward how we're gonna keep maintaining all this, um, on the budget side.
Right, and that's, that's the other part of the discussion too. I mean, our budget is negative $112,000 and now we're talking adding 50, 60,000 more of, of expense on a full-time basis going forward, and how do we sustain that? I mean, cut expenses? I don't know how we do that. I mean, are we gonna raise taxes to sustain this on the long term? I don't like the idea of using Esser money for it. That's only buying the short-term side of it, and then what happens after that? So, I mean, to me, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered as how this is gonna, how this is gonna all work.
From, from a budgetary standpoint though, y- you're talking $3,000. Actually, it's probably a little less than $3,000, because you would be shifting the one F T E to, i- if you don't go forward with this, you're still going to lose the, the full-time F T E's position there. So you, that is not gonna change much more than about $3,000 difference. If you were to stick with the 56, 333, what a 12-month teacher would get paid. If you went to 60, then you would be talking a little bit more.
So when you say the F T E, we're talking about, cause you were e- eliminating one of these science teachers, that's the one that we're talking?
We, we had an additional, uh, science teaching position there that with making some altercations and changes to schedules and, and giving that opportunity to have our middle school teacher be able to teach at the high school level now, uh, has helped expand that where we are now covering that with the two teachers, what we were covering with three teachers before. So it was, it really helped us to be able to do that.
Right, but we're doing that because we have to do it. We were trying to get two science teachers, because that's what we required. So my question would be is, is that a permanent solution? Uh, it was my understanding, we were doing that because we had to, and we didn't, cause we couldn't find two science teachers.
Um, I would say if we wanted to, we could hire two science teachers today. But I would prefer to go cover it more fiscally sound and do the things the correct way and do it with the way we've looked at covering it as, as we are moving forward.
Okay, well, my, my understanding was different than-
Okay.
I, I thought we were doing this because we could not find two science teachers. So we were gonna have somebody who was unlicensed for high school cover it while we could.
No, we just got done completing three interviews for science teaching positions just now, so. Sorry, that, that'd be my bad, I didn't explain that very well.
Is, uh, is Mrs. Maroti now qualified? Has she, has she achieved qualification to teach the high school science course, course or courses?
It, it's doing, she's got a, uh, the, the state is, allows an out-of-field, so that she can take her praxis. Uh, so yes, that's, she won't be qualified. All she had to do was apply for that for this first year, uh, and then she'll take a praxis to get that to be permanent.
Good discussion, board members. Uh, given that our, our retreat is scheduled for next Monday evening, the 19th, Mr. Getz, are you, would you be comfortable with us, um, carrying this item to our retreat for further discussion? Um, and, but yet then, uh, as you said yesterday or today, whatever, at our board, two days ago at our board meeting, we, we cannot or should not take any action at the retreat. So then therefore, would we need another special meeting then to approve this?
Yes, you would. And I have no problems with doing that, that's totally up to you. You guys have to make that decision. Uh, but yes, I would highly recommend that you, if you're doing a board retreat, do not take any action at that, and, and then, yes, have another special meeting to do that, either Tuesday morning or, or following the board retreat. But it does have to be published in the notice. So I would, I would say Tuesday morning might be a little bit far-fetched for being able to publish that.
Well, two board members have made it clear that they would like to have further discussion and time to consider this. Monica or Sheila, have you any, um, any concerns about delaying decision on this?
I don't have-
Um, no, I, I think that, um, I think more clarification is always good. We're not pushing it off too far, so as long as we can meet as soon as possible following the retreat.
Very good. Sheila?
I'm playing with that.
Yeah, and I think that will give us an opportunity to really flesh out the budget and see, uh, where we are and ask questions, uh, of April as to what's included and what's not included. And, um, also on the agenda for the board retreat is the standard of effort report, which, um, shows, shows us how our taxation and budget, uh, compares with other districts that are of similar size and situation to ours. And I think that might be revealing to us as well. Are we doing, are, are we doing justice to our taxpayers or are we not? How are we comparing with others? So, um, I think, I think it's a, it's a very reasonable request to have a deeper dive into this than on Monday night. So I will ask, April, will you please add this item to the agenda, um, for our retreat?
Will do.
All right, anything else? There's, there are no other, other items on our agenda. Any other questions about this, uh, agenda item?
I have a question for April. Um, if you have time, April, can you run the total cost of the proposed salaries for the 10, 11 and 12 month?
With and without teaching license?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Would you include that with, um, the updated budget numbers, if that's not too much hassle?
Oh, yep, yep, I've been working on that. So I should have, um, the stuff for the retreat to you hopefully by Friday night, Saturday morning, so.
Great, thank you.
Anything from you, Robert?
Uh, no.
Monica? All right. Mr. Getz, any comments before we sign off?
Nope. And that's enough at this point, so thank you guys.
Okay, and perhaps you'll even get more responses from a couple of other districts that you requested, um, information from, by them. So with that, uh, there are no other items on our agenda. So thank you, board members, for your good discussion about this, this topic. And, uh, we will adjourn the meeting at 12:49 PM.